For the August eighteenth, twenty twenty five, Mastonia Planning Commission, it would be the roll call.
Mr. Westbrook's?
Here.
Thank you.
We have two of them tonight.
Mr. Ross is here. Thank you.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Wallenhurst?
Here.
Ms. Muskie?
Here.
You're twice? All right, first is approval of the July twenty first, twenty twenty five, public hearing minutes. I think everybody's here except for those few hours. Any comments? You have a comment?
No.
Well, I move to approve as submitted then.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then approval of the July twenty first, regular meeting minutes.
I move to approve that as submitted.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll second.
The first regular agenda item is Mr. Valletti's brilliant electric signs for Fifth Third Bank. Come on up.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me back. I appreciate it. Welcome back. We had some challenges with the size of the sign. We address that. But what we're doing is just replacing existing signs with new signs that reflect the branding initiative for Fifth Third. This is a fairly wide change that we're implementing. Signs are actually technically the same style as the old. There's just some changes graphically with the removal of the wings mainly and then removal of, or the omission of bank for the front.
Mr. Franz Grover's thoughts and things?
Sure. My report stated August ninth. The app said the last time we talked about this really was because, the issue really came into because the overall height exceeded due to the size of the building. There's a limitation in the criteria for the shopping plaza for Alexandria Square. And so the idea was that the logo and the overall size had to be reduced down, which from a readability standpoint was probably the challenge to get that to work, but.
Example.
Yeah, I think, I think it did. Square footage wise, all three signs total a little over thirty seven square feet. So there's no issue there relative to the amount because they're allowed a fair amount more, like one hundred and thirty six square feet. So really, there were just two issues I just wanted clarification on. And then the third is for the commission, the lettering, white letters, blue, green, white logo. How the criteria states is that you have to approve that. I think last time you, I think the commission was, found the colors acceptable. It really was the size issue. So that you do need to formally vote on, but also then just the clarification, two of the criteria. One states that all, all signs shall be placed in the center of the facade sign band and have a common bottom line with the sign band. I just, I couldn't tell if that was.
Yeah, unfortunately, because it's, well, it's just not unfortunate. It's a standalone building, so it's not like the shopping center where each sign, there is a sign band. The peaks of the roof and the building design kind of dictates where the signs need to be. We're actually in the same area as the existing signs, so nothing's really changed in terms of the location of signage on the buildings. Other than the logo and the Fifth Third and the front being on one continuous line.
I do think they're situated symmetrical with the building. I don't, I don't have a concern with it. It just needed to be a discussion item. And then side returns metal with a trim cap.
Yes, I mean, technically, these signs are, they are what would be called trimless drop. And that's what's on there currently. So technically, like a trim cap goes around and then it's, you know, that's how it's connected. These are actually dropped into the sign and they're, they're actually fastened without that trim cap. It's actually a superior application. And it's really Fifth Third. That's what we've always had. And we've put on really all, for all their signs. And it's actually what's on there currently. So.
Yeah, so I mean, the, the standard is you have to have metal side returns and have to have a trim cap.
Yeah, and the, and the return to our. I can't tell you there's a trim cap because there's your trimless drop. That's what, that's what's on there now. And that's all we can kind of comment on.
Yeah, and I don't know how that was put in place previously. That standard's been in place since Alexandria came to fruition, the retail plaza.
No, I know it. It is what's on there currently, so I don't know.
Yeah, other than that, I think the sign is acceptable, other than just talking through that item.
There's a question, Jim? Yes, please. Now, this, the, the sign you have on there now is the standard for Fifth Third and all their banks are very similar to, they do it with all the banks. And so any deviation would be different from what you have on all the other, your, all their other little banks?
Correct. They, that is their standard.
This is their standard. And the colors and all that, same thing?
Correct.
Yeah.
And they have to, well, the colors have to be per their, their branding and what they copy, copyright. So we have to hit that, you know, as to the.
Well, Kevin, can we approve the, the way it is without the change that Alexandria away might? I don't, I don't think they have a problem with the landlord at their, do, you, you've always had the same sign that's slightly different, though, for their new logo. Is that it?
Right. If, if you look at the existing, they have these wings and so all of their branding, those have been removed.
I get you.
And that's pretty much the biggest change. And then the, and I don't know exactly what goes into it. They're removing bank.
The word bank, yeah, 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 yeah.
So that, those are the only changes really to that signage on this particular building.
What's my questions?
I have a question about the, the, is there painting being done behind there because there's going to be wear from the wings and all the, the word bank, all that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's always, that's also why we definitely want to put the logo, especially on the side, where it was. So are we going to have to deal with the scarring from the wings? But, yeah, that's generally the, that's very important. Certainly Fifth Third.
This is the different style that you're talking about? That you guys were discussing?
Yeah, that, that does sort of illustrate it. I don't have a sample with me to show the difference, but usually with the trim cap, you see it kind of sticking out almost like a, I don't know how to describe it. And a lot of times they use jewelite trim, which is not metallic. But you can use obviously aluminum trim, same thing. It's just with this design, it's actually recessed into the letter and attached with screws along the side. So it gives it, it's, it's much more of a tight and wears better. You know, the elements don't impact it as, you know, sometimes you can have, you know, the more exposure to surfaces like that, you can have more wearing and scarring.
I mean, I have no problem. I just don't know if we can approve that, if that's how it's written for that plan.
Is it like a newer technology that's not in the code because it is newer?
It's got new, I think it's something that's been around it like the, like. I didn't know this one cabinet, I don't know, business over there that didn't have the trim cap, but the letters did.
It sounded like you were going to say something.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, 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 the standard has always been you have to have the, the returns in the trim cap. I don't know if the intent was maybe it adds more depth or dimension to it by having that. I don't know what the thinking was, but it's been in place as long as I've been here.
I mean, I, I can't speak to why the existing signs on the building don't have that. They are the same type of signs we're proposing.
I'd have a good guess why that is, but I believe that's okay.
I wasn't around for that project, so.
Yes, I mean, I, you know, it's, that's, standard is what I, what I wrote. Typically, how that works is if you want to vary from the standard, then you need a request from the, whoever the complex at this point, Alexandria Square. I don't know who the developer or complex owner is at this point.
Yeah, I think, you know, there was talk of going to them with, you know, the issue with the signs and that. It's really worth the effort.
I mean, the commission's always been receptive when property owners, complex owners come in, they, they work with them. So they have amended not just this, which I'm very curious about several others to, and it's specifically the colors. It was always only red and white primarily, and then they've amended them over the years to include yellow, to include blue. And then when the commission did an update in, I don't know, twenty twenty or twenty twenty one, they said, you know, we'll just allow all primary colors, primary and secondary colors, and just approve them here at the meeting. But that, my point is, the thinking has changed over time and they've amended those sets of criteria. So I don't know how hard it would be if they came to add, I mean, the commission here, they're all kind of saying, well, I don't have a problem with it, but the criteria, the criteria.
So you would say if, if the property owner, I mean, you know, wasn't agreeable to it, was, would request the change, and we felt was agreeable, that's something that can be amended to the standards. Would you have any real problem with it besides the fact that it's not the current standard?
Yeah, I don't know. Again, I don't know what the reason or rationale of the standard in the first place is. Again, I guess my assumption is maybe we add more depth or dimension and I was scalding here.
Probably. That's about the only thing. And I'm wondering if like they don't even consider, it sounds like there's another business and that they, they might not even understand what the reason is or why it's like that.
Yeah. My assumption is if I didn't bring it up, probably.
Yeah, I mean.
You, I mean, so if the commission.
Right, no, we appreciate your honesty. We really do. Because again, I think, because again, it could cause a problem for another business. So I think bringing this to, to the ownership's attention, then this is kind of how it's written, but helping them understand kind of, there's a difference, but there's not a huge difference. And they, change their, they'll probably be okay with it, but I think it's just kind of, and, and then at that point, if they're okay with it, probably just having to modify it and provide it to the commission for like.
Kevin, Kevin, could we possibly approve this, subject to administrative approval by Alexandria Square landlord, which no doubt would go along with whatever they want to do, their main tenant over there?
That's kind of what I was thinking. You have to.
Something like that. We could get it, we could get you, so you know, have to come back or try to get a variance or something.
To provide a letter that's saying.
You know, I'd go along with it, but if, if we can't, we could do it administrative approval, subject to the landlord going along with it, which my experience or our experience, no doubt would do it.
Yes.
A main tenant, you know.
But if they approve it, will we, so how can that, would we approve it like the next meeting?
Yeah, and I think we probably could do that. You know, we think, so if.
Just trying to see if you're.
If he requested the landlord provide that, and assuming that he would, and we approved the amendment, that the next meeting could, could be administratively approved.
So I, I'm, I'm going to, while I'm going to say the ownership probably doesn't have a problem with it, because they want tenants. If the commission doesn't have a problem with it, which generally it sounds like you don't. Then what I would say you should do, the safest plan, and you don't want the applicant to have to come back again, because they probably are ready to put the sign out. What's your fabrication time to open the sign?
It varies. I mean, it.
If you got some hold of the night, when, when's that thing ready to go off?
Probably, you know, lunch or so. The way we're doing these, we're rolling them out. So we're going location by location, so these are actually moving along quicker than some other projects, potentially one offs.
So I would say that it's up to the commission, but you should amend your agenda to add this as an item on your agenda to suggest provision to Alexandria Square to allow trimless lettering logos. And subject to written requests by the ownership on their letterhead. And if that doesn't come in, your approval is void and the building permit would be, dare I say, revoked. Now, a lot of that's fraught with what ifs, but, you know, you're trying to be friendly to moving this along, which I understand. That's how, probably the best way. I wouldn't do it the other way. Asking for a letter and subject to getting a letter. You are effectively, but you're putting it as an agenda, you know.
Right.
What I will say, if the association is not amenable to that change, we would probably be able to go with the trim cap. It's just we have to redo the sign. So.
When you say redo. When you say redo the sign.
Well, the design, all the drawings are redoing.
Yeah, but the size isn't good.
No, 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 change. We understand.
It's more of a technical exercise.
Correct. It's not ideal, but if, we have to do what we have to do. We understand that. It's just they would prefer the trimless drop. If we go through this process and they denied it, we would want to be turnkey to go with, you know, the, the trim cap. Obviously, it would have to be metal. Can't be jewelite.
Yeah, so that's either more reason why you want to have this as a separate agenda item. Because you're going to put it before this. You would, you would continue this. Yeah, actually, you'd table it, which comes up at the end of the meeting. You'd put the other one on the agenda. You'd act on it, subject to, then you come back to this one. You pick it back up off the table, you approve it, subject to that. Now, getting that wonky item, if you're trying to help.
So do you have to, you have to push the table once at the end of the meeting? Is that what you said?
That's typically how tabling works. I don't think Mr. Coblen's is going to go two bananas if you did this and he still went in front of him.
We delayed you like an extra minute?
I'm, I'm just concerned that it may be, if it doesn't get approved, we're back to, let's just go with the.
That's why I asked you a separate agenda item, because they would approve this one, subject to the other agenda item. And if that doesn't get approved, this then, the default is this is approved with the trim cap.
Okay.
Do you define what the color of the trim cap has to be, if we have to go with that claim? Is there a color?
They're typically, they're bronze. They're judonic, judonic bronze.
But do you guys like this approach? Maybe we table this, come back to it in two minutes? Add another agenda. So we're going to table it and go right back to it? Probably come right back to it.
Okay.
And then deal with the agenda item to request the change to this, to the standard. And then come back to this and approve, you know, vote on this, subject to that actually happening. And if it doesn't, then approval is the, the trim caps. By the way, if you're making all those motions.
See, that's, that's thankfully we get it. Frank, you chair. Okay, so the first thing would be make a motion to table this item.
I'll second it.
The purpose is addressing the criteria of Alexandria Square.
Correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, then.
The record reflects no abstentions.
Okay. And then the next thing would be to make a motion to add an agenda item to address the sign standards for the commons of Alexandria Square, sorry. So I'll make that motion to add the agenda item.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The abstention or? All right. So with this, then I guess we would want to make a request that the, request to the property owner to amend the current standards to allow, what would you call it, trimless letters and logo?
To, hold on one second. Allow what?
Trimless.
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 The trimless drop in.
Drop.
Faces.
Trimless drop in faces.
Okay.
So that's, do we have to specify who's requesting that of the owner?
Technically, I think Fifth Third owns the building, but their, it's the association.
The association.
Well, we are, I was going to complete a motion for this.
All right. All right, so that's, that's the motion as of the moment. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So what I heard of the motion is that you are requesting the ownership of Alexandria Square Development to consider amendment to the adopted criteria for the purpose of permitting trimless drop letters and logos as an alternative to trim cap letter logos.
I'm, I'm looking at the video.
You're going to look at the video? Okay. So I, I do believe that that is exactly what I said.
I saw it.
Any second, any more discussion on that item? No.
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that has passed. If we could bring the signature Fifth Third back off the table.
By motion.
By motion. I'd like to bring the Fifth Third signage back to the floor.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then this would be approval of the signage as submitted contingent on the successful, the, the, the ownership, the association, providing the amendment to the signage plan. And if not, approval of the same signage with metal trim caps.
I'll second that.
All right, Brian, let's do the.
Yeah, I'm going to try. So, the motion is to accept the sign as submitted, accepting the colors of the logos and the letters with blue, white, green, contingent on permitting the. What, what's the term again?
Drop, or, or drop in.
The drop in. Trimless.
Trimless drop in.
Logos. Previously recommended in the prior case. And if the ownership of Alexandria Square does not request that, then this approval of this sign must contain trim caps according to the adopted criteria. And subject to administrative approval. Well, I was, well, I was willing to take it.
All right, so that, Brian just rattled off correctly. This is the motion. That's the second. Any more discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. He's pretty good at that.
I've just got to get better at not moving my lips.
Yeah.
Really appreciate it.
Oh, wait, I'm technically the dummy.
Thank you so much.
Now, if I, Mr. Chair, can I?
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't go fabricating that sign until you have it on their letterhead, requesting it. And then once the building commissioner certifies that it's coming from them, he knows the commission retroactively approved it. He can move forward and issue the permit. But he can't issue a permit, you can't fabricate a sign until that happens. So Tag, you're it.
Gotcha.
So is he, would he?
He needs, he needs to do it, yeah.
So he needs to talk to the.
Yeah, the powers that be, because they, they may be like, go with the trim cap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I can't make that decision, but I appreciate you guys giving us the options here. It's really helpful.
And you just need to communicate to Mr. Monica.
Oh, we know each other.
I was like, oh. Hey, you.
Next item is Mr. Coblen's with the Valley Reserve subdivision. For this, I gotta accuse myself, turn it over to Big Scott, okay? Yeah, Mr. Coblen's, welcome back. So you are here for final site plan and plan approval?
Uh, this is final plan approval, phase one.
Okay.
I'll be back in phase two.
Okay.
Do you want to give us any updates on anything? If not, we'll let Mr. Franz and Mr. Zolati jump into their memos and.
Probably let them. Like, I know, I mean, my engineer did address a couple of your concerns and I'm not sure. And I kind of get what they were getting at, but, did it make sense as a response?
I mean, it sounds like it's some requirement that the company is.
I did not see any email from Dan recently, but go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll just go through quickly on my.
Yeah, let's stick to the usual.
So, so my report August ninth, and basically this is phase one, lots one through thirty six. Phase two is the operating state will come back later. And this is the ability then to create lots and make them saleable to, I'm assuming, to Pulte or whoever you're selling to. And so I just had stated that the final approval for the whole of all things in May of this year. And I had noted eight sort of outstanding things. Documentation, the site plan dates when the conditional use for the PUD was approved. Well and determination, phasing added to the plan. Planic commission approval of the trees proposed for the fronts of the homes. Submission of the construction agreement performance by maintenance bond. City engineer approval of the stormwater management plan. Identification of sidewalks on the plan as being five feet. And then submission of a revised signage plan for administrative approval. I quickly talked to the city engineer and he stated items one, two, and three are complete. Five, six, and seven are complete. He didn't know about four or eight. Four, I can most surely, that has not happened because that would come back here to the commission and that, that hasn't been done yet. So just at some point, need to get the trees in front of the houses approved by the planning commission.
So the street trees, because the last planning commission meeting, we did discuss that and you gave us your recommendation and what kind.
Yeah. Yeah, I gave, I think, I thought we were, we did.
And is that not just for the house, like the landscaping for the house packages?
Um, I thought it was for the entryways as well.
If it included the, the street trees. If it included the, the street trees in front of the house, then it's, then it's acceptable. I, for some reason, I thought it was just a package, like for each of the houses, you know, it's holtie as a standard package.
It shows anything else. I know I resubmitted the entry, the sign and entry, sign landscaping.
Okay. So four and eight may be complete, and the signage was a administrative approval. So I'm assuming the building commissioner has seen that and signed off on it. Yep, so, so the eight items, it sounds like are done. And then the only thing new then, for lots one through thirty-six, I had noted two items. Sheet five and seven reflects the sanitary sewer easement that partially conflicts with the water main easement at the end of the cul-de-sac. I just said that this may be acceptable, it should be confirmed by the city engineer. And then, my second comment is unclear to me as to why the sanitary sewer easement can't be located wholly within the roadway, eliminating the need to impact sublots. And then the same is true about the stormwater easement that touches the southern ends of lots eleven and twelve. And I know your engineer responded, I didn't realize didn't send it.
Yeah, I went to the, I didn't see her respond.
Yeah, I didn't think we were copying on that.
Oh, apparently not, yeah.
It was like last week, I.
Yeah, for some reason, I thought you were on it.
I do not recall. From Dan Barsa, that's.
Yeah, you, you were on it.
I was?
Yeah. A day, six days ago. Six days ago, it says.
On twelve?
Yeah, twelve, yeah.
Yeah, Sub County DSSS requires fifteen foot of easement between the sanitary main and the houses and ten foot on the roadside, for a total of twenty-five feet. They did not allow us to.
Chunky.
Yeah, in, in other words, I think what Dan is saying is the, the water and sanitary have sufficient separation from each other. But the easements overlap because those utilities require, seems like the requirements keep getting bigger and bigger for why their easement has to be.
And that, and that makes sense between sublots twenty-one and twenty where they, where they overlap. I, is there a reason why the sanitary easement can't stay in the, the line's going into pavement, I'm assuming?
Uh.
It's going under the pavement.
I'm sure the line goes under, the main probably goes under the pavement, but the manholes in the grass. I bet that's.
For which lot?
What's that?
Eleven, eleven and twelve.
It's like fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, eleven, twelve. I'd say no, you know, is there a way to just keep the, if there isn't, there isn't. That would be, I think, a, Joe Gilati question?
Yeah, so. Yeah, so, Brian, I, I have a feeling what's happening is the design engineer lays out the main, puts the manholes in the grass, which is. Was that?
Maybe that's where they're at.
Yeah, and then the county in this case requires whatever it is, ten feet on one side of the main and fifteen feet on the other side, and by the time you go fifteen feet, the easement is beyond the right of way.
We had some other ones.
Sure, that's what's happening.
Separation was an issue.
Cause he has to keep separation, yeah.
Yeah, we tried to keep, we tried to add it at four and they made, made us smooth it out a little bit, I think lots like four or five. So, you know, it's been approved by Cleveland Water and been approved by DSSS. Finally got our last PTI today, so that's good.
So that would, that would assume then there's no manholes on the north side of the road and there's no manhole issues on seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. If, if that theory is true, if it, if it's in the lawn and maybe an easement here. If there's a manhole here and a manhole here, then there must be no need for an easement because there's no manholes here.
Correct, cause the name goes that way, yeah.
I had more, but it, just since I look at it, it just seemed odd and vague, and that just raised that issue, but if the city engineer's not having it.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I, I, now that I see this email, I see exactly what the design engineers, it makes perfect sense.
And that was the only, only comments I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Franz. Mr. Gilati?
Yeah, thanks. You know, I, I don't think I really have a problem with the plat, you're showing, well, fifty-eight lots total, thirty-six, like, planning commission has already approved, so that's good. There was that email from the gas company last week. That's a weird one, I've never seen gas request a special easement just for themselves of that size, so I don't, I'll let you and gas stand.
Well, we had a, a, a team's meeting the other day and basically, because it's not, the plat is not filed.
Yeah.
They have to get a special easement. Well, they can't install it anyway, and so we have our utilities there. So, and we're paved and by that time the plat's gonna be recorded, and then they'll be okay and not need that easement. So that was like a temporary easement.
Okay, that's weird, I've never seen.
Yeah, they didn't have it either and.
Okay, alright, I'm not alone, okay.
We didn't quite understand what other rationale was for it. So, and we're not, and we're not ready for gas, so we said, let us file a plat.
Yeah.
And then you guys can get whatever you need temporarily, not through the city, so, you know, probably figure that out, so.
Yeah, at that point, yeah, once. That's all I had.
Assistant Chairman. Okay.
Vice Chair.
Fire. It's Monica, no? Okay. Alright, any questions or comments from the commission? Alright, I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve the plat for lots, sublots one through thirty-six as submitted. With the understanding that all items from Mr. Franz's email or letter and Mr. Gilati's have been addressed and no further action is required.
And I'll second it.
Any additional comments? All of the papers?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I need signatures from the planning commission chair, so I can leave these and pick them up, but.
That's fine, yeah. Chair and I.
Full copies for, for the city ones for the, I guess.
We can sign too.
Yeah. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We're getting there. And needed our last PTI, I was sorry, two hours ago, it was.
Good.
An email.
Yeah, perfect.
Even here, approval for the last, so.
It's all coming together.
It is. Little, little less stressful there for a little bit.
Yeah, it's always stressful.
Yeah. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only, thanks, guy. Only other miscellaneous, I guess there's maybe two. Miscellaneous proposed amended language already fifty-one, twenty twenty-five, the planning commission for its recommendation. We've got copies of that with us. Solitude of shaded underlying areas, is it being changed?
Do you have any background on this?
Yeah, basically, what the city has, they have an ordinance for commercial properties to have a hard surface driveway, it has to be either asphalt or concrete. They don't have anything for residential, so we see even some new houses just having a gravel driveway. And, you know, despite drawing around the city, me and Chris, and, you know, we agree that the gravel driveway is not maintained. We have no control over it because we don't know how wide it is. They keep on heading gravel on one side of the aisle, so they get wider and wider. They don't take care of it. A lot of times there's mud and they track mud in the street, so. And you can head out of cities, you know, there is an ordinance, they usually have an ordinance that even residential area, you know, you must have a hard surface driveway there. You know, again, concrete or asphalt. Now, you know, I know that, you know, we can't go backwards and we can't tell all those people to have it, you know, to, to change it because they're grandfathered in and they're okay to stay. But I think any new driveway that it's installed, it's easy from now on, you know, I, I think that it should be hard surface. The problem and question that comes up that it's gonna be a little challenging is the fact that if you install a barn or something in the back to store your vehicles, now you have to have the vehicle, you know, from your existing driveway go in the back. And we've seen, you know, they cause ruts or sometimes you just put gravel down and it's really unkept now. Can we make them, you know, put a asphalt driveway all the way in the back, so? And how's it gonna look? So that's, that's a little problem. But I think, you know, as far as driveway to the main outs of some, I, I, I think that those should be hard surface. The rest of it, I think I'm open for ideas and discussion, you know, and maybe if the driveway, it's long because the barn is all the way in the back of the house, you know, they, they, they can go for a variance and maybe ask it to be, you know, gravel, you know, we would still have that, but I guess our main talk was for the main driveway to be all changed to hard surface. And, and if you look at this, I think there's a kind of misprint, because if you look at section H, it says that the standard concrete driveway, that concrete should be hard surface, and the same at the other side. It's not, we're not necessarily just limited to concrete, we just, we just wanna give them the, the choice to do it either way. So I'm, it's just, it's a little, you know, kind of.
Yeah, I always thought that was, I guess I never looked at it, I always kind of assumed that, that you had to have. Not a residential, I guess, wow. Crazy, huh? Yeah, and there's people that are currently doing that, like new?
Well, yeah, there's a new house that just went out, it's the last house on Valley View. Right before you get the huts in there, they put a house in the back, that's why it's all.
Gosh, why would you wanna do that and then have a? I, I think it's reasonable.
I do too.
Most communities do, like, hard surface on new build.
I think in terms of, like, I guess, I know you said you could be open to something different, my thought would be if, you know, if somebody puts up a barn or a shed or something like that and stuff, the if it's, if it's in the, maybe two thoughts, like if it's within so many feet of their existing home, a driveway must be installed. If it's further back, a gravel drive could be installed, however, it has to be defined, whether that's by landscaping timbers, and it has to be maintained. So they can't just, cause I get your concern of that, like, the definition of where that driveway is, is gone after a while.
Totally agree with you. I mean, you look at, even in, I mean, you see this building, first building, you know, the light, you know, there's a gravel driveway there, I mean, you don't know where the driveway is, they park on the side and it's just not unkept and stuff, so I, I, I I think, yeah, we really need to address.
I think, you know, if it landscaping timbers and it has to be, if it's stone, then it has to be, new stone has to be brought in. I don't know, maybe it's just every year and it's at their cost. I mean, at some point, I would think that having stone brought in every year or doing some form of a hard surface is gonna start to outweigh itself. I mean, the initial cost, obviously, of putting a hard surface in is way more, but if we're gonna request landscaping timbers and, as an example, landscaping timbers and having it stoned every year, two years or whatever, you know, seems necessary, that cost is gonna get pretty, pretty hefty over time.
So, if the building is behind a primary structure, we're saying that we would have to have some type of concrete and or the gravel driveway that's maintained like, like you said, correct?
Yeah.
Cause where I, where I look at it is, I can see the need if you can see it from the street, if it's even or right off the back corner, but if somebody's got like an acre of property and they wanna put that thing all the way in the back and just drive on the grass, at what point are we kinda, it's a little bit of overreach, cause it can't. The whole intention was so it looks good for the street, but we can't see it at that point.
Well, this is what I'm saying.
It costs for him.
Yeah, that's, that's. Well, I think what is, the other problem is too, is like, I guess if it's not, the way this language reads, if it's being for storage of a vehicle now, again, that we can say they're not gonna put the vehicles in there and, and still do that, but I think where the, the concern, if I'm understanding correctly, is that over time, if you are taking vehicles in and out of there consistently, if you don't have any kind of defined area, whether it be stone or pavement, and it's just grass, it creates ruts and then you've got mud and then, you know, over time, if you're taking whatever you had back there out and off onto the road, it's then dragging mud and lord knows what else out onto the road at that point, so.
Still think that's a little overreaching, I, like, there's different parts of the neighborhood or the city, so the city has HOA sidewalks, all that stuff, I can see that being a part of it.
Right.
But if I've got four acres, I mean, I don't know, I've, I've grown up a property, we had a shed in the back, it was about an acre off, and we didn't have a driveway for it, we never created a pop or anything. But I understand some people could have used that, but I'd rather handle the one-offs in a different manner than to put this far overreaching thing for those types of buildings. I, I don't know, can the city, cause the council writes this stuff, so can they rewrite it or can we try to convince them to rewrite it if it's past a certain distance?
You make a recommendation, then, and they'll review it, and they can accept it, they can change it, and they can discard it altogether.
Well, and the other thing, what's the maximum square footage for an, like, shed or something nowadays?
Six hundred, six feet, six hundred square feet, so like a shed, I.
So would that be enough to fit a car in or are we? Because I'm saying if we approved a shed, it'd be difficult for most cars to go in there, but if we're approving a garage, then I could see that that's where it.
I agree with you in terms of, like, when you said shed, I don't think that's what this language reads as. I agree with you, shed, like, you're not gonna put a hard surface back to a, like, for your lawn mower.
Right, but we might need to define what's what, so that that's clear.
Well, I don't know, maybe it's. The square footage does in this, it says detached private garage with a maximum.
Size for storage of vehicle.
Yeah.
But is that kind of too general?
Well, I think if you have a, let's call it a rear garage that's big enough for a vehicle and has an overhead garage door, so you pull a car in, then you're subject to this rule. I think that's what I'm trying to get at.
The one thing I would say is like.
You know, you get a little, you get the little thing that you buy at, from the parking lot at Lowe's, it's just big enough to drive your lawnmower in there.
Yeah.
No, I don't think that's what's being discussed.
Correct.
I think the other thing I would say too is storage of a vehicle.
It's in black and white.
I wonder if it should even include the, the comment of like trailers or like an RV or a motorhome or something like, well, I guess vehicle would be a motorhome. Because where my concern there would be is, it comes back to your comment, is somebody dragging something in and out of a, a barn or whatever in the back, if they're towing it out of there, chances are it's gonna, you know?
Well, if he can.
Any kind of vehicle or any kind of trailer or something like that's gonna get, if it's not paved, you're gonna have.
Like this gentleman came in last meeting, uh, Bellevue, who wants to bring his oversized garage in a backwards property. And the purpose of his garage is to store six cars in there. I think he'll be driving six, six cars, you know, in this structure back there, and, you know, he's probably grabbing the grass to get to it, you know, and, I mean, in summer when it's hard, that's okay, but in the winter time, when you go through, he doesn't have to do anything, really. I mean, at least, maybe like you said, if, if it's not gonna be a hard surface, at least we would allow him to have gravel, but it is, is to be enclosed by, you know, some, some kind of, either railroad ties or something, they will, you know, restrict that and give us an idea of what it is and how hard it's gonna be.
Kevin, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, uh, I'm wondering, why is this planning commission even, even opining on this? Is this any of our business? Do we have to approve some amendment to the code? Is that, is that our job?
I was, I was, they said it has to go through the planning commission for.
It has to go through the planning, we have to approve.
That's, that's what everybody would mark it as.
Well, how did, how did, where did this come up? Parking in residential districts? I, I don't even understand that, but, you know, you can't bring a van, how about if somebody wants to move, we have a moving van here? And on the, on the last page, it might be patently offensive. What kind of language is that for an ordinance? And whose opinion is patently offensive? I, I, I can't understand that kind of lingo in a, did this go through their law department, our law department and all this? I, I, I can't understand that, uh, kind of lingo in a, did this go through their law department, our law department and all this?
It came...
Is it copy of other ordinances?
Tony, I think the only thing they're contemplating is the surface of a driveway for a new build and the surface, how to get to a rear yard barn. I, I don't think they're contemplating...
So eleven seventy-one twelve, we don't have to, we don't have the attention to that?
Well, no, I, I, that's not what they're looking to potentially revise.
It's the highlighted sections.
Yeah, but there's a highlighted section under eleven seventy-one twelve.
Oh, this, this is the only, this is the only thing we have to opine on is the highlighted?
Please, please.
Yeah, thank you.
Let me, let me talk you through a process.
Yeah, thank you.
So you have an ordinance, uh, introduced, um, ordinance fifty-one, I call it, that went through under recommendation by the building commissioner to council. You amend the code in three ways. You have the planning commission initiates an amendment to the code. You have the ordinance introduced by city council, which comes on referral to the planning commission. Or you have, um, property owners filing an application that would initiate amendment to the code. The code consists of two things, the text and the map. In this instance, what's being proposed, the ordinance fifty-one is changed to the text. What's being proposed to change the text is eleven sixty-three oh two, H two, H three, and then eleven seventy-one twelve E is being proposed for addition. Those are the only things being proposed to amend. All the other language is existing, underlined and highlighted here. Insofar as your obligation, chapter eleven forty-one of your planning zoning code sets forth how if these amendments are done, just told you three ways. And then I, ordinance from council, you have, um, interestingly, only thirty days to act on it from the adoption of that ordinance. In this instance, it was adopted July twenty-fourth. This legislation to the city of a recommendation on July twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-five. So you have till July twen- or August twenty-third to make a rec- report recommendation back to council. Thankfully, your ordinance does not require you, which most ordinances do, require you to conduct a, like an information. Yours doesn't. You don't have this on your agenda tonight, is that why?
It was under miscellaneous.
But it's not an agenda, it's not a case. You need to add this as a case and you need to take action tonight. Otherwise, you're, you'll lapse on your thirty days pursuant to chapter eleven forty-one. So you'll need to, by motion, you should have a vote, not a yea or nay, roll call vote, add it to the agenda. Ordinance fifty-one referral, ordinance fifty-one from council, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. And then you should talk about things you're talking about and then make a report recommendation, which can include, but not limited to, propose overall changes, additions, deletions, or nothing to what they're proposing. And then that goes back to council and then they're obligated to hold a public hearing. That's what you need to do tonight to address this at a time of year.
Okay. So first thing, then I'll make a motion to add discussion, uh, for recommendation of ordinance fifty-one on a referral from, uh, city council to our agenda.
I'll second that.
We get a, uh...
And for the, for the record, that addition of this ordinance fifty-one relates to amendments to the planning zoning code sets eleven sixty-three oh two, H two and three, and eleven seventy-one point one two E.
Alright.
Just so the, the record's clear of what you're adding to the agenda.
Thank you. Can we give a vote by roll?
Sure. Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Wallenhorst?
Yes.
Ms. Muskie?
Yes.
Okay, so now you've added to your agenda, all of the stuff that's in the minutes prior to this, just take Susan, you know, copy them into this section, because now it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
And so you can go forward and continue to talk how you wanna talk about the item and what you wanna do. And you're making a report and recommendation. Ultimately, council can say, well, we don't agree with planning commission, or they can adopt your recommendation in full and have a public hearing on that.
Okay. Uh, I guess a question for Brian and Joe. You guys, have you guys seen this, especially the, the driveway extension back to a, you know, a separate building? Have you guys seen anything like this? Seen...
I think it's, it's, um, it's intermissed. Some communities require it to be hard surface, some allow it to be gravel. None that I know of that, that are paying attention to it, allow it to be grass. So it's something, gravel, as you're aware, well, maybe you're not, is gonna be treated the same in terms of, as hard surface for runoff and for stormwater attacks from any interstate. So however, that's irrelevant, either way, there, some of it could be taxed regardless. But I think it's common to see something, gravel or otherwise. I think Nino's point is well made. When you begin saying, you're talking, Jason, you have something far back, you know, you're in, now have a hard surface, concrete or asphalt driveway, you know, if, if the house is, if this is the house and the existing driveway runs right on the property line under the right of the house and the outbuildings over here, you're gonna have this to get back to it unless they put a second driveway in. So I think that is a, an issue you just have to work through. You know, maybe ultimately you want to start to define where, like many communities do, where you're allowing outbuildings to be placed. If you're not allowing them that, in that back corner anymore, they have to be within a certain distance from the primary structure. Um, so that's a bigger picture issue you can talk through for later, but maybe that's something you gotta do. Because then when it's limited, you know, say it has to be within fifty or seventy-five, whatever the number is, feet from the main structure, well, that's a lot more palatable to have a hard surface than it is
Five hundred feet.
Two, three, four hundred feet back crossing an open yard. And then what happens if they have to get to that area through a repair unit that you don't allow concrete in?
Cause they're only allowed one crossing of the repair.
Yeah, crossing and you don't allow concrete in that.
So, so like, I, I just wanna make, I made some comments for you. Hopefully, uh, city council's gonna listen to the comments on recording. But if you choose to live in an HOA, you choose to give up certain freedoms that you have with your property in exchange for things, okay? And if, if they wanna do something like this for a smaller plot of land, but not putting any type of minimum or maximum acreage or anything, I, I would never want to take, uh, someone who lives in the city that has five acres of land and prohibit them from putting an outstructure four and a half acres from the front. Because I believe the reason we, I want to believe the reason we have these rules is so that from the street, it looks good. But if they wanna put a huge out in the building in the back of the property that no one but them's gonna see, then I don't think we really have, should be putting requirements on it. I don't think we should be requiring really any type of driveway or anything like that. So that's why I would like, I agree with, um, what Scott said, gravel with, you know, some boundaries and stuff. But I would still like to say within so much distance of the primary structure. And, and, you know, a person who buys five acres of land, chose not to live in HOA, possibly because they don't wanna live under those restrictions.
And, and those are all...
I'm not really just saying that, you have to say that for the record.
Yeah, those are all, um, personal opinions you have on the matter as a member of the commission, and that's great. Um, I would, the only, I would say back to you is, in that example of four acres in the back, that may have bud up to the back of a small lot where they're seeing that big ugly building. And so having standards for that big ugly building, so, and that's what this zoning code is set up to do, right? Provide for orderly development, aesthetics, health, safety, welfare. That's, that's what this zoning code is set up to do, is to protect property values, to protect neighbors from big ugly buildings. You know, it's something that, um, as you all know, I, I worked in another community during the day. We were having a problem with long buildings being presented on side property lines. And this came up recently, this notion of what's the side yard, what's the rear yard? And the way your codes are written, it needs to be changed, in my opinion. Because we've always interpreted to be the side yard goes the full length of the property all the way through the rear yard, but on the side of the main structure. That's how it should be because where we were having a problem, where I can see it appearing here and maybe it just hasn't blown up yet, you have these long buildings that are by its side yard definition, five, ten feet off the property line. And so even somebody who has two, three acres, they have their house up near this side of their property line. And now this person who has five acres, but most of their land goes that way, they put their big ugly building right up five, ten feet off the side property line. Now they get to look at that. And they get to look at that long massing and so...
It's permissible by the code.
It's permissible by the code. So how you address that is you make bigger setbacks on the side yard, which goes the full length of the property into the rear yard off the side of the main structure. You put bigger setbacks commensurate with the size and the length of the building wall facing the side yard. So I'm, I'm a bit off, I'm a bit off the topic, but I'm on the topic still. As you said, big ugly building, it raises my, my antennas, because that's what you're trying to avoid. So I get it, you have five acres, you wanna put something in the back and just kinda out of sight, out of mind. But it may not be outside out of mind every way, because you may have a smaller lot bugging up to that.
So I understand that, but we're talking about driveways, right? So I, I appreciate your example, we're talking about driveways. So in your hypothetical example, you could protect the other property owners with a much more economical solution, which would be landscaping, creating complaints that require that, but not requiring to put in a forty thousand dollar concrete road to go back four acres. It just becomes cost prohibitive. But I don't, I don't think that's right to require that on a large piece of land.
Kevin, let me ask my, let me ask a question. Wouldn't the ordinance like this affecting certain people in the community, like you mentioned them? Shouldn't they have public hearings on this to see, maybe some homeowner would object to having to do this?
City council will.
Was there, was there a public...
They have to have one still.
There's gonna be a public hearing on, on all this?
Yeah.
Even if we go ahead and approve doing it?
You're not approving, you're recommending.
We recommend.
And then when that goes back to city council, they are required to have a public hearing.
Alright.
Yeah, that doesn't happen.
So people can object to, uh, uh, being affected by, uh, the, uh...
If they pay attention to the newspaper, they can object.
Yeah, okay. I thought, I'm gonna say, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Cause I just wanna be clear, Mr. Cox, there's no notification, direct notification to property when there's an amendment.
No, you wouldn't know what would be, yeah.
You have to look at the newspaper or look at the website, which generally most people don't.
So if, whatever we're going to vote on, that's just if we agree with the language or we don't agree with the language. It's black or white, right?
No, it's...
Make recommendations to change.
Recommendations to change it, yeah.
Cause I would, I would not vote for it, awake to it.
To your point, you can make a recommendation, A, I think we should add another sentence, um, hundred feet or, you know, whatever.
Do we have the option to, to review this more and think a lot more if we have to make a motion tonight?
I don't think so, I think we have to act.
We'll have another meeting between, uh, twenty-fourth and...
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't say, and shall within thirty days after the referral. Approve, disapprove, or make suggestions.
I guess we could certainly come to the, uh, council's public hearing on it to, to, as a resident, something after. Something additional we could thought of.
Yeah, they have to get thirty days' notice in the paper, so when's the next council meeting?
Uh, the next council meeting would be less than thirty days.
Thirty days, huh?
It would be September eleventh, next council. There's no council the next Thursday.
Yeah, so September eleventh, they'll get back your recommendation and then they have to, they have to notice it in the newspaper for thirty days. My guess is September eleventh, you're not gonna see this until beginning, probably November council meeting would be when they would have their house of carry. Just the way things go into the newspaper, it just takes time.
So kinda to summarize, where I think we've kind of had some of these, the, the hard surface driveway in a residential area, does anybody have a problem with that? Yes, the primary driveway should not be gravel. I think that's the, uh...
Yeah, I don't disagree.
That's, that's E, eleven...
Eleven seventy-one twelve E.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree with that, yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't think we have any, any probably recommendations to that. It should be concrete or asphalt, uh, for your primary driveway. It's, it's the other, and I guess things that we've tossed out here is, you know, does it have to be concrete or asphalt? Could it be gravel with, defined with, uh, something like land, uh, railroad ties, landscaped to an accessory building? For the accessory building, um, so it doesn't have to be a, you know, forty thousand dollar, you know, road back to their, to their garage. Um, could it be vast, but defined? That's one thought. And Jason, you had the thought about, is it's, you know, a certain distance, not requiring it. Was there any other things that we were talking about?
If it's within so many, I think it kinda parlayed yours, if it's within so many feet of the existing structure, it should be a hard surface material.
Yeah.
If it's after, I don't know what those, that, what it, that's my feeling.
But what with you talked about is I, I would be okay with even if it's within a certain distance, it could be gravel or as long as the gravel is maintained and all that's, you know? I don't know if we can get into forcing to re-gravel it every year or something, but that it's got defined edges and all that.
I think it's within a certain amount of feet, I think just from an aesthetic standpoint, it should be a hard surface material. If you're talking going way far back, that's where I'm kinda thinking like, after a certain distance, after that, I, I don't disagree.
Yeah, but where I think we might disagree is that if it's so far back and I don't have a, I, I have no idea, I can arbitrate throughout a number of feet or yards or acres or whatever, I don't know. I would, I would, I would challenge city council to come up with something that's reasonable. But, you know, if it's two hundred and fifty feet back, I think it might be crazy just to put gravel in. You know, I don't know, that's my opinion, but, you know, everybody could disagree with me on that, so...
My thought is, you've got this in two, under two different sections, in two different paragraphs, paragraph two and three. And I think that's actually a complication. I think perhaps that, that gets broken out and maybe comes in under, after five, paragraph five. And then the language becomes, if the building is designed to support storage of cars, the driveway has to be paved. If it's an accessory building, you know, then if it's not intended to support cars, then you can have those smaller accessory buildings way in the back and not be forced to do is pave.
Yeah, cause it's...
Right, I think it's like, I think just kind of dictating, or we're dictating that, uh, pavement just goes to buildings that you put cars in. Will encourage that those buildings don't have, those bigger buildings, you know, because you have a distinction of six hundred feet for a garage, whereas it's two eighty-eight for an accessory building. And I realize that that is, but you're not gonna put a car. But I think it kind of, um, alleviates that, um, that concern. But if, if you're gonna put cars on it, you're gonna be more encouraged by that code item to keep it closer to the house, whereas if you put it in the back, then...
Yeah, and that's, I know we can get into all these what else, but I, I kind of, I don't completely agree with that only because if I had the ability to put a big, you know, like holds six vehicles and I have the ability to put it back, it's, you know, I can landscape it appropriately, so if there's other properties around there, that would be better than forcing them to bring it closer to the road where you're gonna see it because we're forcing them to put in a concrete driveway to it and it's too cost prohibitive to put it back, which is where they originally put it. If I have a land, I'd rather they put it all the way in the back, so you just don't see it, so...
You know, I think of farms. I don't think there are any farms, maybe left in Macedonia, but if there were a farm, to, to have a driveway going back to your barn, a paved driveway, uh, maybe we're not thinking that way, but every farm that I remember, uh, you, you sure didn't have a, a paved driveway going back there. And, uh, it, it seems to be an overreach, this, this particular, these clauses, strikes me that way. So would we make a recommendation or just our thoughts or, or what? I'd vote against it because, you know, it isn't defined, uh, for, for exceptions. For, for some farmer with, uh, forty acres, not that they have them here, but they're, and that's how I think of, uh, what used to be, uh, farms and making him pave the, the darn driveway going back to his barn or his back forty. So it, it strikes me as an overreach.
I think it needs to just not be limited to vehicles either. Like when we say vehicles or cars, I think it needs to be included trailers or anything like that. I mean, people that have motorhomes or like a, a big travel trailer or something like that. Again, they're gonna have to pull that thing out at some point if they have it sitting back in a barn. And then at that point, to Mr. Monaco's point, like, they're gonna be trucking mud, dirt, whatever else, off their property and then out on the road.
Is that really the bigger problem?
It says size to allow storage of vehicles. So if you have a trailer that you're gonna park in a garage, will that garage is sized? So if you have a trailer that you're going to park in a garage, will that garage size to house vehicle? You know what I mean? You have a trailer that's going to like carry you, you know, car or?
Yeah, I'm thinking like a camping trailer you're going to go to, like a motor, like an RV or something like that.
That's kind of getting.
It would be, yeah, but that's like, does that fall in the definition of a vehicle? And I'm not trying to get into all semantics, but I don't want to like leave it open ended and somebody's got a big travel trailer, they park in the back of their garage, barn.
Yeah.
And then they pull it up a couple of times a year, they're dragging.
Yeah.
But is that, is that one of the legitimate concerns? We have a problem with the dirt and all this stuff being dragged out of the city streets.
Well, Mr. Monaco said that, yeah.
Because then if the city council just passed something, or maybe it was just discussed about allowing recreation vehicles and stuff, that they can sit by the house all summer long, essentially, so.
It is, uh, is an, an agenda that might not be discussed right now.
Does that potentially minimize the dirt and grass and stuff being dragged down the streets?
Um, I'm sure, you know, if you have it on hard surface in the driveway, rather than having it on the grass in the back, that's going to help that for sure. But you know, there is some, some issues that they have to work out with that also.
I just feel like the legis, the two different things conflict with each other. They don't, but they, they kind of, they contribute.
I know what you're saying, I know what you're getting at. Because of my concern of like the trailers, you know, you have a trailer, you sit it back in your yard and you're pulling it forward. Well, if it's allowed to sit up forward more, yeah, you are obviously are not going to be.
Yeah, we, we have a neighbor on the street, parks are already against the rules all summer long. And I hate to look at it, but whatever, his way is, not the guy's going to say anything about it. But if they had the ability to put it in the back there, the only thing preventing them is fifteen thousand dollars in concrete. I'd rather them take it in the back and maybe only bring it up a couple of times a year and deal with the dirt until the rain wants to sweep it away. I don't know, I, I just want to make sure, I'm not trying to be competitive, I want this on the record, so it makes.
No, I, I don't disagree with you at all. I think there definitely needs to be some more parameters and definitions put in here to.
I think they do, I think the public comments, if people actually know about the show, they'll come and, and bring up some serious. I guess we're, could, could our recommend?
If I, if I can, if there's clearly differences of opinion, and a lot of discussion on this topic, and you don't have enough time, I mean, to, to think that you're going to make a recommendation tonight is probably just not fair. The bill and Christian, I were just talking, what you could do is take no action on this item and send a request back to council to effectively continue or table indefinitely their own legislation and allow the planning commission pursuant to eleven forty-one to initiate an amendment to the code to address this issue and work with the building commissioner and staff to come up with the best way to address it. You initiate it, then it goes to council to react, as opposed to you reacting and having little time to do so. So if that's something you would entertain, then you could take time, you could take this home, think about it, study it, think about what you may want to, to do to address it. You can even have a work session to talk about it here amongst the commission. But it buys you the time if you take no action and request that they table indefinitely their own legislation with the building commissioner's support, which he seems to be okay with it, for you then to initiate the amendment, to work through it how you see best. Because frankly, you are the ones that amend the code, council's the ones that just react to it.
Brian, I think that's a good idea, because it's a little unfair to these five.
I realize, yeah, you just, you just denied, they didn't give you enough time and, and this is, uh, I mean, we have to make the right decision. This is not something that you can just make up in a few hours.
We do, I, I think to your point, I mean, just the concerns that you brought up tonight, I think, and, and I don't disagree with what you're coming up with either. My thought is, is like, I'd like to even just understand, like, where do we have those outline conditions of where somebody does have like a five acre lot? And we have to take that into consideration. So like then realistically, like how far back are we thinking before we're like, okay, it's fine? It's, it's honestly out of mind.
Yeah.
You're fine.
I agree with that.
I don't know where, like again, like we can say two hundred feet, well, how much is two hundred feet? How many of these lots are truly out there that this could be affected by? Now granted, if somebody bought, they could subdivide it and all this other stuff, but I think just kind of.
That's an outlier.
What's that?
That's an outlier.
Yeah, exactly. I think we just need to understand better that, like this, because again, I think Jason brings up great points too, and I, and I guess we just need to understand where those outliers are and find out what that happens.
You need to make your time in the preparation.
That's why I asked if we had to act on it tonight, because I'm like, I don't feel comfortable. I think there's just too many questions or concerns we have.
You've entertained enough large accessory buildings over the years.
I know.
That you could take a sampling of those, I mean, heck, I can compile that data for you, that's not that hard. Go back to the last five or whatever number of years, what's that?
Would it cost the city more money to do that?
At the rate I charge, you will, they can buy a fumble. But, but, or, or I'm trying to take off, you know, that, I don't want more, but you could compile the last five years, ten years, whatever you want.
Yeah.
Look at, large accessory buildings you approved, addresses, and the circumstances behind them, you could look at aerial photography and see, well, how did those work? If you implemented this, how would it have affected those? And that'll give you some basis to understand the question in front of you. But you can't do that tonight. You really should, it sounds like in my opinion, ask, just send back a no recommendation on this. Ask council to consider tabling their own legislation indefinitely with Mr. Monaco's support of re-initiating it here pursuant to eleven forty-one as an amendment considered by planning commission to council versus reversed.
So this was, you know, is this initiated by your office here?
Yeah, my.
Okay, so it's not like it's something that council's like, man, this is a hot issue that they, they want to, you know, get this done.
I started talking about this actually last September, and then we put it on hold because of the weather, because you know, there's been some issues. A lot of the record's been busy, so I brought it back up and he just, there's, there's no hurry.
Okay, Doug is not going to screw up something by, you know, doing that.
This is, this is something that I think we need to take our time and I think we need to get a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to take time, it's just, and it's good to have a discussion like that because I, I see everybody's point here, and I think everybody's got a good point. So we need to find a happy meeting here.
So, you know, if we do that, do we put it on as a, a discussion item again? Like, all right, by next month, if you, you could compile that list for us, we could do so a little bit of thinking, but at that point decide that we want to have just a separate work session just to, to work on this a little bit, lay out some of these, these plans that we've, that we've talked about.
That's probably what you do, a separate work session.
Yeah, block out a couple of hours, think it out. But set that up at, at the next meeting, depending on what Brian finds, if he has time to pull that stuff.
You could, um, you could put onto your next agenda right now, work session to talk about this. If there's too many applicant items, then at your next meeting, find a date sooner than later to have your own separate session. But you might be able to do it at your next meeting. Tonight would then, you know, like a night where this, you can have a couple agenda items, you can do it. It's up to you guys, yeah?
I guess, give me suggestions. Yeah, I also would want to see what all you find compiled before we, before we set a work session.
Kevin, I, I have one other tip.
You need to go around these lots, these lots.
Well, you know, the other thing is you don't have standards in your R two district. In your, in your R two district, you don't have accessory building standards. They're in R one, but not R two. You could have larger lots in R two where this applies, but you have no standards in place.
Tony, you have a feeling?
Yeah, I have a, a point. Uh, my experience with the city ordinances is you copy everybody else's. You have this in other cities, and I'd like to see that instead of compiling a list of what we done with big buildings. Uh, what, what other cities and towns around here, do they have similar ordinances? That's what I spot, this is very similar to many other ordinances that you have somewhere. And I'd like to see what other cities around here have done for this particular issue, if it is an issue or a problem. I'd like to see what they do, and we copy it.
You don't want to copy it. Be careful doing that.
What?
When you start copying other people's ordinances, I promise you, it's going to affect yours. This, right, I mean, off record everyone, but this is a result of copying your ordinances.
Well, I, I see that, but, but I, I noticed that it's commonly done.
Look, looking at other communities to understand how they treat the issue is important.
Like what's Gates Mills do about this? What's other cities do about this?
What's Pepper Park?
What's Hudson do about?
Well, I was in Pepper Park, I could tell you, most communities do not even, don't even allow two garages on a property. You know, they have one garage, and if you want to put additions to the garage, you do that, but you're not allowed to put a second garage unless you turn the existing garage into a living space. So, I mean, just sitting.
If someone required the one mile driveway, like concrete, like he was talking about, well, let's see if they have that somewhere in some other community.
A lot, a lot of communities also regulate the size of the accessory structure to the size of the main house. You don't do that here. To me, it's crazy that we approved two thousand and twenty-five hundred square foot outbuildings with houses of fifteen hundred square feet. That, all you've, what you've done is if you really get into it from a use standpoint, you've made the outbuilding, the primary building, in use on the property, and the house, the secondary, just by sheer volume. So I, I know, my, my rule of thumb is I tie the accessory building as a percentage of the ground floor of the main building to try to keep them similar in size, so you're not dwarfing one another. Now, that, 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 that smacks a little bit to, it's my land, do you want with your land? But it just, it's a good way to control aesthetics.
There, at some point there needs to be a compromise, I appreciate that, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and it's all about that, eventually to get the aesthetics you wanted in the whole property.
Yeah.
Well, why don't you state what you think we should, the motion we should be making or the recommendation we should be making tonight? We'll move it as noted.
Yeah, so I think what I'm hearing is the building commissioner feels that this needs to be studied, the planning commission feels it needs to be studied. So based on that, you would recommend no action back to council? And at the same time, suggest that they consider indefinitely tabling this ordinance to allow you time to initiate an amendment similar to this that will come to them for approval.
So that you'd be a motion?
You just made that.
Wait, I, I didn't get all of it. Suggest indefinitely to table to allow time to?
The planning commission to initiate their own amendment and work with the building department.
Okay.
And I guess planning to, to create that language.
Kevin, I'll second your motion.
So, so moved, and then Scott seconded that. All in favor?
Aye.
Bring me your roll call.
I think it's fine. And then you probably also are not one to, because you don't want to lose sight of it. You want to either put it as your next meeting or work session, please put it onto the schedule. So a mo, a motion to add this topic to your next planning commission meeting. And then, you know, when I can figure out the details more, it won't take that long to query out what properties you approve these things on. Get that list to you, you independently can start looking at that.
Yeah. Yeah. So you have a, a cutoff for next meeting, isn't it?
Friday.
You have an idea, it's a pretty busy.
One thing so far, and I always get a couple last day.
So we might all say.
At least put it on the agenda, we can discuss it briefly if nothing else. So make a motion to add this item to the, to our agenda for next meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And what you, what you added for the record is consideration of ordinance fifty-one as a planning commission initiative.
I'm sorry, what?
Ordinance fifty-one, the language in ordinance fifty-one is going to be a planning commission initiative. So basically, what you see here may be very similar than what it already is, but it's going to come from the commission, and you have to study it, basically, to plan.
Is this an item that could all, kind of like are discussed on the record, just if any other?
Yeah, you can, you can send it around a serial meeting over email, and you can do that. But if you have questions, you want, you know, you want to talk to the chair about some things, or you want to email me and, and you know, hey, I have a specific plot, you absolutely can do that. It's just if you email the group and the group responds, that's a serial meeting. If you email the chair and the chair says to everybody, what do you think of this? That's a serial meeting, you don't want to have an open meeting that's violation.
So, do you have a motion to adjourn? Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, we have, well, what, what last, at the last meeting, we have this gentleman who proposed this larger garage in East Delhi, I mean, Delhi Road. At that time, he was told that he had to remove two existing structures, which he agreed to. Fortunately, on property, there are three structures. Two of them are rather small, but this one is over the six hundred square feet, I believe. Now, he, his understanding was that he was just going to remove the two smaller ones. I believe to comply with the ordinance, he needs to remove one of the smaller one and the larger one. And he is not happy with that, because he claims that his understanding was that he only had to remove the two smaller ones.
He, he does have to remove two smaller ones with the caveat to keep the bigger one, he has to vary it. And I communicated that to him tonight, and he said he's going to apply for variance. Now, if it's something, so this gets into amending the code. If the commission doesn't want to send applicants for variance on that second structure that's over two hundred and eighty-eight square feet, you could apply your larger provisions for larger lots and unique sites. You could apply that to the secondary structure, make it clear that the commission has authority to allow bigger structures. The main and secondary. You can do that. I think the way the code reads now, the secondary structure is capped at two eighty-eight, and you can't make a change to that. You can make a change to larger accessory building, which is the six hundred square feet. If you want to allow the second one, you just have to change the code to say the commission can vary both. If you want more than two on a property, again, this gets into what's good, what's good planning. So I don't have a lot of five and ten acre lot changes. I have a lot of larger parcels where I work during the day. And what we did was, we capped, it used to be capped at two, completely two, two structures, detached structures, detached buildings on a property. And it didn't matter about lot size. So what we said was zero, one acre, you could have one, one to two acres, you can have two, and over two acres, you can have three. And then we linked the square footage of the detached structures to the main building. So again, this just, it could be all part and parcel with talking about the driveway standards as well. If you want to amend the code, you can do that. If you're happy with, you can only vary the, the larger six hundred square foot, and you're okay. If there's an existing building that's over two hundred and eighty-eight square feet, they either take it down or they go to the board zoning deals to try and keep it up. In this instance, this structure, this two, over the two, the bigger one that this gentleman wants, told me it was built in nineteen forty. So it's been in a long time, probably there were no permits at the time. I mean, zoning didn't come into existence in Big Apple, the big cities, until the mid twenties. Actually, it was challenged here in Ohio at a Supreme Court case with the village of Euclid, which is now the city of Euclid. But regardless.
We weren't even a village yet in nineteen.
Yeah, and I, I wasn't even thought about it. So it, um, not until like nineteen ninety was I thought about it. So it was, uh, so zoning is a new thing, is the point. And so if you, you know, you want to address some of these situations where you have older buildings that are larger, you can do that through the amendment process.
Well, it's okay, yeah, I, I get it, you know, you know, this guy said, you know, I've got five acres, where can I put this, you know, large building on there?
So as of right now, you've kind of advised him, you should see a very.
I just talked to him right before the meeting, and you know, I talked to him, I just talked to him before the meeting, and he said, well, I was just seeing if you set something different. So, so I told him the same thing, you know, told him, which is the larger one, the only way to keep it is you have to go for a variance, otherwise it has to come, it has to come down.
And I, now I kind of remember that, and I thought, now, now looking back, I can see maybe he was confused because he, he gave it up, the building to take down pretty easily. That's a, it's a pretty major thing.
The two small ones.
Like he was thinking two small ones, I think we were thinking a big one and a small one. Like, he was thinking two small ones, I think we were thinking a big one and a small one. I was kinda surprised that he was like, yeah, it's gotta come down, it's gotta come down, like, okay, cool. But he wasn't thinking.
Now, we don't lie.
Yeah, that's why he took it so quickly, like, he wanted to turn it on a little shack.
At the end of the day, it wouldn't have mattered, unless you, you guys, well, technically, you don't interpret the code, the code's interpreted by the zoning administrator. It's been historically that the city planner has interpreted the code as well. But I always say, really, I'm not the zoning administrator, that's the one individual charged by the private charter to interpret the code or the board, board of zoning appeals to interpret the code. You could send this to the board of zoning appeals and ask them to interpret, um, eleven sixty-three oh two H to determine if you have the authority to vary both structures on the property.
See, Chris, the zoning inspector, he thinks that you guys should have the power to allow both of them there. He's very adamant about that, and I kind of agree with him the way it's written there, but.
I'd say if, if he was willing to do the variance, you're having, you're gonna go fat.
Yeah, it's not gonna address his situation from the time meeting, just long term.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, is the administration's position is commission should be able to allow both underneath provisions for larger lots and unique sites. If that's the case, you can do one of two things, amend the code, to be clear to state that, or allow the board of zoning appeals to interpret the code and give you direction if you have that authority. They have that, we amended that whole chapter, so the BZA can interpret the code.
If we wanted them to do that, what's our process for doing that?
You know, we would like the, by motion, they're, they're attracting the administration to request board of zoning appeals to interpret that section of the code. Or just amend.
But amended just to give us that power?
Because if the BZA interprets negatively, and you do want that authority, you would have to sue your board of zoning appeals to overturn interpretation.
We have a meeting Wednesday, we, I don't know, we, uh, can't do it that fast.
It would have to be on their agenda, duly noticed, you know. I would suggest you just add it to the discussion that we're having about ordinance fifty-one. And holistically look at outbuildings and how you treat them.
We should, in all reality, just having these discussions, we should probably just set a separate meeting, just to have these one like that. Because there's no way, I mean, if we either, one, we're gonna keep kicking the can down the road because we have so many people on the agenda.
You need a dedicated time.
Or we're going to be, we're gonna have it, and it's gonna be at the tail end of whatever meeting it is.
We're not gonna want.
We're not gonna wanna deal, we're not gonna wanna link it in that discussion, I think there really just needs to be a separate meeting.
Well, let's, we're.
Holistically looking at these two items amongst anything else that maybe needs to be discussed, we should probably just do it as one meeting.
Why don't, in the next meeting, since we've got it on the agenda, we'll have a brief discussion, see what, what brand new we can find, and let's all bring our calendars and look at the next few Mondays or something like that, or whatever nightly work, and we'll set a work session after the next meeting, things add down a little bit.
Yeah, you only need whatever twenty-four hours in this meeting, unless you charter or something.
Then it would probably be a year or two.
Yeah, you, you know, we can do a lot, and it just gives staff time to prepare the agenda and post it however they need, yeah.
All right.
And then I would make a recommendation, city engineer must be here for the conversation. Suit tie. I'm, I'm gonna say misery joins, misery enjoys company, that's all I'm saying.
You have my proxy.
Are you gonna adjourn this?
I was, I, I think I'm gonna motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, right, you're making, all in favor?